I'd like to call the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Wall City Council meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please call roll?
Hoffman?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Stan Anderson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Mike Anderson?
Here.
Are debating about switching it up?
Yeah, no kidding.
Like, no, I won't do that to meetings.
No. Bob sat over the edge last time. Okay, let's stand and say this such a reason. Here, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carolyn, is there any order of business for emergency?
There is not.
Is there attendance on Zoom?
There is not.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Don't move.
Dan has moved?
Okay.
And Mike seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is anyone need to declare a conflict of interest this evening? Seeing none, do I have, uh, in your packet was the minutes from the March sixth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting? And if you have reviewed those? May I have a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Zach? Zach has moved. Mike has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. In your packet also was the, uh, claims for the city of Wall. Those claims amount to thirty-three thousand, six hundred, thirty-six dollars and four cents. Also was the fire department. Those claims are two thousand, two hundred and, two thousand, two hundred, eighty and fifty cents. And the cemetery is six hundred dollars. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve the city bills, the fire department, and cemetery?
So moved.
Second.
Rick moved and Mike seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also in your packet for review was the Gulf financials as well as the budget, expense budget to date. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or thoughts on any of those? Or Carolyn? Seeing none. Brings us to item eleven, and it's our privilege today to have Tony from Wildland Fire, and he's going to share some good news with us and, and tell us about some next steps.
The items are, uh, passed out to you guys as a full, um, the first one would be the Hot Springs one hundred mile radius. This is basically a thing that I put together for our dispatchers, and there's also one in there that has, um, Wall in their list as well. So it's basically a turnaround time for our aircraft. It's just a visual aid for, um, folks to understand, um, what our capabilities are. Uh, and then the other one you'll see, uh, is the State of South Dakota seat base program. Uh, it's PowerPoint that I put together a couple of years ago, so some of the information is still current, well, most of it's still current. Um, if we want to go through the PowerPoint presentation, I can, otherwise it's pretty easy to follow along. There are some photos of other sites that I had put together, uh, for our seat base location just as a more visual aid. Uh, then we kind of talk about what, what the seat base can do for the community. Um, and then basically it comes down to what we do at the seat base with our managers. We, uh, we don't fly the aircraft. We contract the aircraft in, and, um, we basically, we manage, and we're timekeepers for the aircraft. Uh, there's several different reports that we have to keep turning on. Um, and then also our duties, what we do at the, um, airport. We make sure the ramp is clear for, um, any fog, uh, foreign objects or debris. And then with the tanks that, um, you see in the pictures, that's liquid concentrate. Uh, we buy it from perimeter solution. It's a, their mix is called LC ninety-five AFX. Uh, next year they are mandating that all bases, uh, go to the new product, the LCE twenty. It's supposed to be more environmentally friendly. Um, so when we get our, uh, the base set up at the airport, um, we will actually be using the new LCE twenty. So, um, the LC ninety-five, uh, it, it was a good product. It was just, uh, there was a lawsuit in Washington with some environmentalists that said this stuff is no good, but, and we're the same people from California too, so. Um, and then the next slide basically states on there what the, kind of the mix ratio that we use. Um, with the LCE twenty, uh, there is going to be a slight, um, mixing difference, but, um, it's still going to be more water than, than product, so. Um, and then the reason why we have containment tanks is, um, the next slide where it says leaks. Everything, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna leak eventually. Everything sometimes fails, like, will fail over time, and, uh, we try to our best to mitigate that with the containment tank system. Um, we make sure that the containment tank is big enough to take both tanks completely utterly fail plus, uh, ten percent, so. Yeah.
Tony, is the solution pretty corrosive?
So the, the liquid concentrate itself before it's mixed with water, um, it's deemed, um, hazardous material just because of the salt content, but once we dilute it with water, then it's no longer considered hazardous material. But in the concentrated form, then yes, it is right at that hazardous material. Um, if we took the straight concentrate without dilution and poured it on the ground, it works as a great weed killer.
So in the tanks, it's, it's, it, it does not have the water, correct?
So the main tank that has the liquid concentrate does not, is not diluted with water. But the secondary tank, the one that we, um, load the aircraft with, we do dilute that one down.
Ready to go.
It's ready to go. I tried to have at least three loads minimum in that mixed tank. So, just so when things start going, um, it'll be ready. But then that second, that primary tank that has liquid concentrate in it, um, that's what we use to mix and fill the, the other, the other tank up with.
And you, do you leave them tanks full of water before fire? They're just sitting around?
So both tanks, um, will sit over the winter time. Um, we don't drain them. We don't, um, we don't tend to move them. But, um, during springtime operations, then we set our pumps, hook everything back up to the tanks, get them stirring, um, and then we, we need to stir it for at least forty hours prior to, uh, any air, um, before we load it up into the aircraft.
Have they done that? Pick up algae and sit in the plastic?
Uh, over long periods of time, then yes, um, it can get algae in it, but we try to move through the product so that doesn't happen.
And didn't that cause problems in the planes?
If, if, if there is an excessive amount, then yes, but with the high content, uh, salt content, um, and they're formulated, um, we typically don't see that much algae growing in there.
Can we just recirculate that to keep that coming?
Yes. So our main base that we have in Hot Springs, um, that's our busiest base because it's in the southern hills, and that's where we get primary and most of our, of our fires. That's why we stayed our planes there at Hot Springs. Um, so our guys will go out there every morning and research the tanks for a minimum of an hour every day. And then, um, our reload bases, which, uh, Wall and Pier and Spearfish is, um, will come and research, you know, once a week or twice a month, will try to get out to the other bases to get them stirred to keep everything suspended. So the next picture, you'll see a pump with a big red pool on the bottom. Um, that happened due to, um, one of the rubber jacket seals leaking in the hose, and so and in this area, it's, it's right next to the state hangar. And if we had a, you know, a major leak where the tank busted, um, all that retardant would then, you know, go into the state plane hangar, and I don't think government would be very happy with us, so. Um, we were making plans on, um, moving to a different location at the airport, but then I got the idea of, hey, why not, you know, check out other places that are maybe closer by that, you know, I don't have that three and a half hour drive to Pier if something bad happens. So, um, Kiderman, um, kind of started talking to us, and we started talking to him, and then all of a sudden I'm talking to Mary, and then here we are.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Um, next is basically what the seats can do for us on, on the ground. Our planes will not ever put out fires. So even if we had a whole fifty fleet of, um, aircraft, our planes will never put out a fire. It's always the guys on the ground that put the fire out. We, we tend to, um, provide more coverage, more, uh, times to give the, our guys to the fire. So, I mean, we can doubt it all day long. Um, if we don't have that ground support, the fire will always flare up and come back to life. So we always, we, we always need the ground forces to put the fire out. Uh, the next picture of the, uh, tender and the, uh, types six, that was a video that printed off. Now here's the caveat most airports don't like, but unfortunately it's part of the game. Um, our planes tend to get dirty, um, and we need to wash them off. Um, we tried to mitigate the, um, wash off onto the, onto the ramp. We tend to rinse off the airport grounds where the washing planes, so we try not to leave that big red stain on the grounds. Um, previous management, um, didn't see that as a issue, but, um, with me stepping into the role, I like clean work areas. So I, I make sure that I, I put a wash trailer together, so the folks that are washing planes up have ample amount of water and, and pump pressure to wash the ground off as well, so. Any questions? About our sea operations?
So with, with your pumps in there, then do you have, um, like, let's see here. In this, on the second page there, there's the, the three pumps inside of the containment area. Um, and then there's the big one outside of that. Is that one water? How do you, where do you get your water to?
The, yeah, um, the bottom picture there, that is, um, the big steel tank. That's our water source.
Okay.
So, um, we'll fill that up with local water. Um, and then the, the tank right to the right of that, that's the LC tank. You can see that it's a little bit lower because it's concentrated. We don't need as much in there. And then the s- small one in the middle, that's our measuring spoon. We'll put a hundred and fifty gallons of the LC in there, and then we'll put about two thousand gallons of water and mix it, and that goes into the third tank. And then that fourth tank that you see in the background, that is considered an offload tank. So I see, if we ever needed to offload the planes, I mean, and that, um, mixed tank was full, then we needed somewhere to offload the, the plane into that fourth tank.
How many gallons does, um, your guys' aircraft hold?
So the tank on the aircraft itself, um, it holds up to eight hundred and fifty gallons, but with our elevation, uh, the, the heat during the summertime, um, the amount of fuel that the aircraft is required to have, um, we start off with the first load about six hundred and fifty gallons. Then we go up to, uh, six seventy-five, and then seven hundred, and then seven fifty, and by that time we, we need to fill them back up, and then we're back down to that six fifty, I see. But some pilots, they will tend to push the mark.
Do you tie down on tanks? Are they?
So, uh, the tanks themselves, we typically don't tie down because there's enough weight in the tanks that the wind won't mess with them. Because the, uh, concentrated tank itself, um, it weighs roughly about eleven and a half to twelve pounds per gallon. And then the mixed tank, um, once everything's mixed up, it roughly weighs about nine and a half pounds per gallon. Well, there's no other further questions on that one. Um, you want to bring up the lease agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the good news.
So last week, um, Tuesday, in fact, last week, um, Secretary Bob Perry, um, read and reviewed our lease agreement and signed it. Um, Mary and I and others were working as best we could with this lease, so, um, it was actually fairly simple after everything got, um, done. So we'll be, um, Mary, do you have the map of the airport?
Yes.
Yep. Pass that around. Uh, we'll be leasing a small little section right there by the small hangars. Um, we'll be giving the city, uh, what, seven hundred and fifty dollars every year annually with a five-year lease contract, so I'll get the renewal. So every time that we renew, then we negotiate the prices. If the airport needs to add more money, or, um, we need more space, then the, that's the time to negotiate the, the lease, so.
We'll all need more money.
Right? Very few times I've ever been on a lease agreement where the price has actually dropped, but, so, no, that's totally understandable. Um, and we, we tend to like that five-year lease. That way our, our people in the office don't tend to forget. Um, you know, the lease has got to happen every year. Those are the ones that people tend to forget about for some reason. But that five-year period, um, it gives us enough time to, you know, build up and find the little minute things and then, um, go again, so.
Tony, how important is it for Wall to have airplane fuel at the airport?
So when we order our aircraft in, we also, um, order in ground support with the aircraft. Um, and they will bring, uh, fuel tender trailer with them.
Oh, wow.
So they have about eight hundred gallon, um, tender support on, for fuel, so they'll, you know, go to the closest area to get jet A. And in this area, it would probably be Rapid City, I'm assuming, would be the closest.
So good.
So he, and I don't know how much you guys know about Hot Springs, but Hot Springs does not have jet A, and that's our home base.
Oh, wow.
So having jet A here, um, will not deter us for, you know, any reason.
Oh, that's great.
I mean, if you have it, great. I guarantee you my pilots will buy it, but if you don't have it, then it's not a deal breaker.
Very good.
Um, anything that is ours on the airport will maintain, um, if something breaks and we don't know about it, um, please call and let me know, and I'll be out ASAP to get it fixed. Um, utilities, um, you know, we'll, we work out of the fort body and we can run off generators. Um, I can contact the local VFD to transfer, uh, water to the storage tanks. Um, we try to be so, as self-sufficient as possible. Um, but if there is a chance of a closer water source, then, um, if it's metered, we will, um, go off the numbers, um, and report them in. Um, because even if we're not getting charged, it's still nice to know where the water's going instead of the leak. Um, if there's electricity, then while I'm in, put a meter on it, we'll, um, we, we will pay for it, so. Um, other than that, um, phone, internet, cable, uh, if we deem that it's necessary to run operations out of that, then we'll make the arrangements to make that happen. That's not on you guys, that's on us, so. Um, any of the ongoing around the, um, our lease area, uh, we'll take care of, um, but if you guys, if you guys want to, I'm not gonna say no. I'll take all the free help. Um, we do follow all FAA regulations, so, um, and if we ever, um, get notified that we're not, then, um, we'll make, and make it right. So. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Well, Garrett will definitely be your contact person as you move forward. And what do you think your timeline would be? Because blame me, those fires up north, I just had you on my mind, like, wow.
So even if we don't have our system in place and, um, there's a need to, you know, go out onto the fires when we have the aircraft in, um, we don't necessarily need to have the retardant tanks in place. We can actually, with some training, we can actually build aircraft off the tenders from the VFD. So we don't, we don't need a whole setup to support fires that's close by. And if we would have had the aircraft in when the VIA fire took off by Bikini School, we could have probably been flying right directly out of here.
Exactly.
But as for timeline to get things moving, to get the containment tanks set up, um, I gotta get three bids out for a containment tank system. Um, John, uh, here, um, I've worked with.
Dietrichs?
Dietrichs? Yes. I worked with him. Um, I bought another tank system from him, so, um, he's here local. I like local. Um, but I'd like to work with him again to see if I can get another, uh, system set up. Um, other than that, it's the speed of government for that. Um, so as soon as I get that approved, I'll get that put in. Once that's put in, um, I'll bring the tanks over from here. Um, and then hopefully if we don't have a busy fire season, I will have enough help to make that happen this summer, but if it is a busy fire season like it's looking like, um, it might have to wait until this fall to get it put in. I will do my best to get it done and get it done quickly.
Well, you're certainly appreciated, and like I said, Garrett's your contact person, so if you need things, he and the fire department are, are standing by to give you a hand, so.
And at any point in time, if there's any questions, comments, or concerns that come up later on, um, my cell phone is always on, and I try to answer it as quickly as I can. I've answered your emails.
Absolutely. You do, do that, so.
And I have some business cards. I'll pass those out to everybody, so everybody has my contacts, so, um, I'm open book, so if there's any questions, I will try to answer as best as I can.
Does anyone else have any other questions or?
Thank you, guys, for considering us and working with us. It's benefit to our community. Really do appreciate it.
I appreciate working with you guys, so. It's been, it's been easy.
Good.
And if you ever need us to go check something for, you know, to, to drive all the way down here, you know. There's no doubt with that, too. It's been pretty good with that. And, you know, um, anytime the fire department wants any hands-on training, um, I'm all for training.
Cool.
So, even if it doesn't benefit me in the long run, I will still train.
Okay.
So we're gonna need a lot of new people, so younger kids, so.
That's fabulous. Yeah. We'll take you up on that.
Yes. I'll just pass out my business card and we'll all be done.
Thank you very, very much. Welcome to Wall, so. Okay, that moves us on to public comments. It's a time for members to discuss or express concerns to the council. No action will be taken, and we have a three-minute time limit. And Sally, I think this would be a perfect place for you.
I didn't sign up, and I still.
No, you're, you're good. You know, we don't have a signup sheet. You guys do, but we don't, so you're good.
Um, hi. Seems like it's, it's been a while. I think the last time I tried to come over, we were having some snow. Uh, Happy St. Patrick's Day. I pretend I'm Irish, even if there's no part of it in me. Um, a few things at school, and I don't really know what you guys are, what even. Um a few things at school, and I don't really know what you guys are, what even interests you, I guess, but Wall School is alive and well. Um I do share my excitement with our basket, boys' basketball team that's gonna go to um Aberdeen for state tournament. I'm also gonna share my excitement over our wrestlers that just finished a good season and did very well at the state level, so that's exciting to watch our kids excel in that area. I'm rethinking school. Our kids can travel in ways that we never got to travel when I was young or it's just easier to travel. So what I'm watching our kids do is gain opportunities to learn beyond our walls. And I'm wise enough to know there's a lot of learning to be done out there. So that takes into consideration, what should attendance look like at Wall School? And I'm sharing a brainstorm with you that's got nothing to do with my notes. But there is just so much out there with kids able now to go to meetings at Washington DC with their parents to go to different countries. We've had kids go to different countries this year. Um just some great opportunities because of our ability to travel so much easier. Um and I think more affordable than in the past. And so that's kind of fun for me to watch and enjoy with the kids. Prom is coming up next weekend, the twenty eighth, I believe, Friday. Um I invite you to come to Grand March if that is your thing. They asked me to go swimming and supervise at Watiki, which I love to do, but I'm always glad when it's over. Um third quarter ends this semester or ends this week. That means one more quarter of school. And we put in another year, and I don't know where it goes. Um and with that, I'm planning graduation. I'm excited for graduation, not yeah, I'm a mom too, as some of us parents, several, some of us in this room. Um and Dusty Johnson shared with me that he's coming to speak. So that's some excitement. Um I did come home from Washington DC. What if I go over my three minutes? Washington DC, um it made me realize how wonderful we have it right here and that we are going to be just fine. The things that we live in fear about with our government right now, we're gonna come out better on the other end, folks. We just gotta trust the process and some of those pieces. And so all of our congressmen that we worked with reassured us that. And Ivan spoke with us from Wall. Um I think our school was probably one of the few that went away feeling good, because so many of those schools live in a fear that the government's gotta take care of them. Um we're working on new classes, things we're planning for next year, planning never ends. Um February, our board had a really good training session with a friend of mine and a big um he's a state trainer at the state for school boards, and so he comes and trains with us. We're also working with our school attorney. We're going through an audit of all of our policies and we're making sure all of our policies, our handbooks, um everything aligns. And they'll be up to code is what I'm gonna call it, just I like having our attorney go through it, through us with, through them with us. Um so that's been a fun process and I'm learning lots. Questions about what's going on in school. CTE building looks like a shop. It's dirty. It smells like smoke. And kids are, there's trailers in there, new floors, there's kids making metal dice punching holes with their Scotchman machines. There's so many cool machines going on in that building. It's fun to watch, so. Yeah, and we're building new classes for next year. We've got a teacher. I wish he had more time in the day because he wants to teach more classes and we've got time. But I told him this, I said, I know our city is kind of wondering if there's any opportunity or anything for adult classes. I said, I don't need you planning it. I don't need you stressing over it. We gotta just get you through one semester. But think about what that could look like. So, I don't know. But yeah, good things are happening. Thank you.
Do you have any kids that need to come help me for a little bit, maybe?
I'm gonna call it a design flaw in our CTE building. The way they've got it, and I don't know for sure where tumbleweeds. It's a vortex and it's right in our front door area. And I'm not worried about tumbleweeds as much as when I'm, what's gonna happen when the snow pumps thick again. And it's right where our main entrance now for our kids are, in that CTE area. I don't know what, what was the thought process. I'm not an engineer, but I maybe should have. My keys never get in trouble though.
Well, I didn't say because they're in trouble. Some learning experience on.
Outside the building, outside the walls. Yeah, we can talk because there's some that may enjoy that. More than what I have for them to do.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sally. Thank you so much. And we are excited about um looking at adult education classes, absolutely, and yes, Garrett is really fun to work with, so kids would.
I've got kids that are wanting to work for the city because they've got a internship with.
So safe travels. So that brings us to Rashawn, please, Economic Development Director.
Yes, um I have to chat with you, because I can talk to what can go to this next. Hey, can we do another day? Yes, of course. Oh, wait, we're gonna have a meeting. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Um it's been a minute, I realize, since I've given you a report. Just time flies by, so um lots happening, as as we like to say, lots happening at Wall, definitely going on. So um we had our first Coffee Connect this Wednesday. Um uh Senova came in and did a, uh who's an HR consultant and did a great presentation. Um we had a really good attendance for that, um and I got nothing but good feedback. So um that's off and running. She is, um she has she is offering a one-hour free consultant for businesses clear a wall. Um if you wanna do a um employee assessment or a employee handbook assessment, a risk assessment, should kind of give you a a little review and see if she can help you and and maybe you guys can work together in the future. If anybody's interested in that, please talk to me. Um but it was really, really informative and just, you know, how to avoid pitfalls down the road um by keeping everything up to date, uh especially that employee handbook, so everybody's on the same page, whether you have one employee or a hundred employees. All right, um so if you're interested in that, please see me, because um I do have those um one-hour vouchers for her. Um I, our bold partner event, some of you were at that. I appreciate your your feedback and coming to help us uh get our board um moving forward in a good um direction. I mean, they were moving forward before, but to keep us on track. Um one of the things that came up in that that uh feedback from the community was they'd like some more leadership training, so I'm gonna try to put that in place for both um um our youth as well as our adults. Um to try to also get more people involved in the boards, um chamber board, um city council and that kind of stuff to help out our community, bring new people in and get some new ideas. So um that is kind of what came out of that. It was a really, really good event. Uh we even had the park service there. They they came in and gave their opinions and stuff, and that was kind of interesting to get an outside view with somebody that doesn't live in the town but deals with the town. And um they had some really good feedback too, so I was appreciative of our national parks coming in and joining in on that, because they are part of our community as well. Um I also attended a GOED's Annual Economic Development Conference in Pierre um last month. Um I met a whole bunch of people. Um I spent some time with our lovely governor. Um he will be doing a reset tour. Um he's gonna be going around visiting um communities. And he asked if any communities had projects um that they're ongoing or finished um to let his office know and he may come visit our, the community. I did put our name on the list for that, because we've had a lot of stuff that we have done. This town should be proud of the infrastructure they've put in, um the airport, the this CTE building, Fourth Street, um the industrial park, so I put all of that stuff down and we're on the list. So hopefully he'll come in and visit us and see all the wonderful things that that you guys have put into place and done um for that. So um let's see here, what else? Um I got some really good information on site selectors who are um the people that find uh land for businesses to expand into. So um I've taken that information and running with it to get us out there, to get us known, um to get in front of them, whether they have a project um now, they may have one in the future, and I want them to know who Wall is. So um I was very proudly wore my pin everywhere I went at GOED, so I could let everybody know that Wall is here and back and we've represented it and we're ready for business. So um and the governor took a really good look at that when I was talking with him and checked his hand, so um he he's aware of who we are. Yes, you you can fly. Something else I'm working on. Lots of different information there. Um I I attended a lecture on biotechnology um and they're looking for places to put incubators, so I'm gonna do some more research on that. Um and um and see if we can't get maybe one of those here um so that we can help ag community as well as um merge it with technology. Um I found some very interesting information on just general population um that um people are waiting until they're around thirty-eight before they're buying their first house because of the economy. And they're also pushing us having kids, so we're gonna have a little bit of dip in workforce because we have not had that continuous feed of of young kids into the system. So it might get a little bit worse before it gets better, but um I think kids are taking a different route and realizing that um trades are not a bad place to be and um that they can make some really good money there as opposed to a four-year college and that, so um keeping on on top of that. So that brings me then into my Western Dakota Tech meeting. Um I went and sat down with a couple of ladies there and um we had a really good conversation. They're really excited to help the rural community. Um they have programs um to help bring classes to communities, so one of the ones they do is the CDL training um and certification, so and that is important um for this community, because we have a lot of people that grew up on farms driving and they wanna get their CDL, but they don't need to go through all the schooling and all that kind of stuff. They just, they already know how to drive. They just need somebody to say, yep, he can drive, he can back up, he can do all of that. So they are willing to come to Wall if we have enough people to do that. Um and uh and get people up and get their CDLs going, because we do need CDL drivers. So I'm excited about that. If anybody's interested in that, um let me know and I will put you on the list and hopefully we can get get some of those young kids um moving and trucking, as we would say.
Costs, sorry.
There is cost to it. It's not completely free, but yeah, nothing's free. But um we might be able to work out if we have enough people, but finding some money or something for that too. Um because there is money out there for training and that as well. So um I said, keep that in my back of my head, and as I read grant programs, I usually find something I like, ooh, that'll work. So we might be able to bring the cost down for some of the students here at Wall, okay? Um they also have business classes that you can take online um to help people get their businesses started. And also, if you wanted to hone up your skills, you don't have to be in a degree program. Take a few of these classes. You could just take um sort of, what is the word I'm looking for? Like an adjunct type thing. Um they also have, which I found very interesting, interns available for the trades, marketing and social media, um hospitality management, um accounting and office management. So one of those will be good for our business uh here in town, because we do have a lot of hospitality. Um there is a program involved in that. They just are coming in to, you know, work for you. They're here to learn as well. So if you know anybody that's interested in maybe having an intern in their uh business, let me know and we'll get you connected with them. And like I said, they're very excited to work with us. Um and um they'd be interested in in seeing our CTE building and seeing what kind of classes we can collaborate with. There are a whole bunch of programs for the students to do um dual classes, so they start earning classes before they get there at a cheaper rate. And when they get to school, they have less time in that two-year program and they also get it at a discounted rate, so. Um I know that Kelly knows about some of those, so we'll keep on top of that. And I did meet our new CTE instructor, Garrett, and I'm not gonna say his last name, because I'm a show's lottery. Um but he asked me to reach out to the community and to see if there was some way I could find next year he would like to make for his project for his students. They wanna build a tiny home on a trailer and he's looking for supplies, wood especially, to build that home, and then they wanna auction it off at the end of the year um and sell it to somebody. So if you know of anybody that would have any materials um that would be willing to donate or help them with that project, that would be really great. Then they would use that money to go back into the following year to build another tiny home, and that's how they would train on their electrics and their plumbing and and all of that fun stuff. So like Sally says, he's got a lot of great ideas and I'm really excited to work with him. Um I attended another Channeller Hall luncheon, which is the base and civilian combination luncheon. And um got an update that the runway construction at the base is going well and they expect to have the planes and the personnel back here and whatever. So that is good news for us. Um they also had um South Dakota School of Mind and Technology there, and they gave a lecture on um how they're collaborating with the base. The base will give them problems and their students will try to help them solve that. And um through that, they have created several businesses um that started an incubator in their school and now have businesses outside. Um they have a, can't remember it is, it's like cold something, but it's a sanding process that helps clean and repair metal like on the planes and stuff, and that started at an incubator and is now a full bledge class. So uh I love that collaboration and that was just really amazing, the amount of stuff that they do for that. Um IP uh committee had a meeting and um we're working on more advertising and marketing for the industrial park. Um so we're not the best kept secret. Um we would like to be known. That's why I I I'm out there talking to everybody. If you have not seen it, our uh sign is up for the IP on Fourth Avenue, which Garrett helped us put up. And uh thank you very much for that, you guys. I appreciate it. Um and we're still working on finding people to go into those construction condominiums, but I think I have a couple of people that are interested, so fingers crossed that they uh communicate well with Dan and that gets going and hopefully we'll race them around this summer. That would be awesome up there. Um so airport, a lot of stuff has been happening at the airport and um kind of pulled my attention. We have a new business that wants to uh use the airport to do CD flights out of um our, around the Badlands. She's really excited, um kind of a little fireball and on point with that. Um so she wants to use our airport. She would love hangars. She would love fuel. So we're seeing what we can do to work those things out if possible. Maybe not this year, but definitely maybe next year, the year's coming. Um but I'm working with Preston and Travis, our airport engineer, as well as the city to see if we can um help that out and help her um get that business situated here. She is looking for office space for this year. Um so where her people can meet. Um we think she's probably just gonna end up on the airport in like a a trailer or something like that. If anybody has some office space somewhere that she can meet her clients, that would be great for her. But in the meantime, she will probably be out of Rapid and then come in here to pick up people and do her tours and then go back to Rapid until we do get hangars and fuel to work it out. Um and then just so everybody lets you know that um the governor's ag summit is uh coming up. If anybody's interested, that will be in Deadwood this year, June seventeenth to the eighteenth. It is free to the entire ag community, um but you have to pre-register, so if you're interested in that, just let me know and I'll get you that information so you can register for that. And uh this last item I already kind of talked about, which was our new business, uh Fly Badlands um that hopes to be up and running this summer to do tours out of our community. So that's kind of what I've been working on. Anybody have any questions for me? I I I love it. I I will be honest with you. I really love this job. I appreciate the opportunity you gave me to to do this and to help the city of Wall, so. I hope I continue to do a good job, and if I need, you guys need anything or have any thoughts or ideas or suggestions, please drop them on my my desk and I'll see if I can run with them, so. And there it is on a regular basis.
So with that being said, Rashawn, why don't you talk to us about Fly Badlands?
Our our next point, that's kind of why I put it there at the end of my list. So Fly Badlands, um so Anna Kumar, um I'm not even sure how young she is, but she um she is a pilot and she's been to Wall into the area several times and loves it here and wants to do um CD tours of the Badlands. She cannot fly over it, because you're not allowed to fly over the Badlands. But she can fly around it. When you're high enough, you can see quite a bit of distance. Um she is um working on getting her plane set up and, like I said, hangar space and fuel for her business and office space. Um and she wants to hit the ground running this spring and be going this summer. So she's moving forward quite quickly, getting all of that stuff into place. And I'm trying to help her to continue that and work with Preston and that so that we don't collide or have issues or anything like that at the airport. So she's very cognizant that there's other businesses there and willing to work with people, so.
So one of her greatest needs is that she's come up with it. Until she can take advantage of the situation at the industrial park. Something that would meet her needs right now is she's thinking of some kind of a trailer space. And so what she's, what I think we need to do is make sure that we have the approval of the city council. If you recall, where the engineering and the construction company had their construction office in the airport parking lot? Did any of you get out there and even know where that was at? Well, that's kind of the space in the Zoom meeting that we had this morning that Travis was recommending. And she would like to put some signage up to let people know, yes, this is where you come. If you've made a reservation and this is where you need to meet me at. So that's what we're seeking tonight is, do we need a motion or just consensus? That if that's what she ends up doing, that that would be allowable at the airport. And then she would load her plane there. She will sometimes leave her airplane here. The weather is okay, but until we get those hangers in place, and we talked about that with our engineer again this morning. Until those are in place, she will need to commute out of Rapid City with her plane, so.
Well, part of that meeting was there will be an agreement put together as well because she'd be leasing some space out there. So I believe Travis is going to be working on that for us. And we need to kind of come up with what we consider a fair price. My thinking is that in that lease agreement, we would have language to say that, you know, approving her having this office space out there, whatever we come up with, whatever the square footage be. So I think we would have that ready for the April seventh meeting, but we wanted to.
Carolyn, I have a question. With her doing flights out of the WALL airport, are we covered insurance-wise for this?
Yes, we would, that would be part of the lease, a thing that.
So she asked so much insurance? And is the city of WALL covered?
She would have to name us. That's part of the agreement we put together for that, so.
So we just kind of wanted to let you know that this is kind of in the works. And so that you weren't totally surprised when we put an agreement in front of you at the next meeting. Hopefully we'll have it that far. But she is really on top of it, Rochelle, talks to her almost daily and has helped move this along for sure, so. Okay, no, nobody sees any other issues or concerns with that?
Okay. Thanks, guys.
And we certainly don't want to be in your way either. See, that is not going to happen, just so you know. But I'm glad you're aware that that will be one more activity. One of the things that Travis pointed out to us, we need ten planes here to keep our airport. So she's actually, may bring two with her. Right now, we're really depending on Preston to keep our numbers there. But we need more planes, so that's very important to us. Okay, any other comments or questions on that? Moving right along then to the revision policy four-one-four. And that comes from an employee manual. So Carolyn, do you want to fill us in?
Well, I believe this was just kind of an oversight on my side of things. Because we had changed the policy that, you know, for the on-call workers, they have thirty minutes to report, which should also indicate an employee would have thirty minutes to get to town. So I, we had discussion about that and then I think I just didn't get all of it done. So this is basically what that is, is just changing that portion in the policy that the employee would have thirty minutes to get to work.
Need a motion on that?
We do.
I'd like that motion.
Okay, Gary moved, Zach seconded. Any other questions or thoughts to be asked? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, finance report.
So starting tomorrow, I will be heading east for my, just to be a part of the district meetings as my position of the president on the municipal board here. So just giving you a heads up, I will have my computer with me. I plan to be doing work while I'm in my hotel room during the day because the district meetings are in the evenings. So don't be afraid to always text or send emails and stuff. And I'll be continuing to work on cleaning up my computer and my files so that they will be ready to pass along to Katie when she's in the training position. So she has the same files I'm working with. So I said two weeks, but when I actually got to looking at the calendar, it's actually more like three weeks. And so that's the reason why we had to schedule this meeting early this week instead of the normal Thursday. Is because I'll be gone and then we have to reschedule the April seventh meeting because I'll still be gone that week. So I did want to express my gratitude for you guys allowing me to do this traveling, which I think is a really important part of this position and stuff. So thank you for that and just wanted to remind you that the time is here.
Okay, with that being said, and Rochelle talking about leadership classes. And as I was in the office the other day, I noticed that Carolyn, you were part of the leadership class of twenty-twenty something one. And you've got a plaque on the wall. Zach is a product of our leadership training. The gentleman that's president of the school board was a product of our leadership classes. So they do make a difference. And so, and by George, sometimes you end up as president of the state. But really cool though also is not only you, president of South Dakota Municipal League, but Sarah Houston is also president of South Dakota Retailers Association this year. So constantly WALL is showing up all over the state, so it's all good. Okay, public works, please, Garrett.
I can't remember who contacted me, but they said.
Got an email actually from the county that the last time the satellite office was open, they found out that it wasn't.
So the HVAC unit isn't working over at the police station satellite office. So I had Eric give me a quote, or go look at it. The control board was bad, the compressor was bad. And they say if you replace all of that, you should replace the motor, which is the only three things inside of the unit. So you might as well buy a new one. But everything else is still good, the unit's in.
The shell's still good, right?
Yeah, but yeah, everything inside's still good, just the main unit outside. And the quote was six thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars.
Because of the cost, we need a motion. And that's not something that can just be included with the purchase orders.
So we have money in that budget aisle. We've got to have that money in that budget aisle, right? Someplace, somewhere that is in there, so.
Probably, I don't know, we're changing temperatures, but the heat probably is kind of not as necessary as will be coming up in the condition we need it in that some point.
Okay, so I hear that we do need a motion then to, how can we best say this? Replace the parts on the board of the HVAC system.
Just replace the unit.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Rick moved, Stan seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay.
Today, I think I got the blinking stop sign figured out.
Which one?
Ours, the big one over there.
The stop sign, the blinking stop sign, okay?
So hopefully that should stay working. And I ordered another battery for it too, just in case the battery was bad. But I had to rewire some stuff and there are pins in there and they didn't quite line up. So I think that's what was causing the issues.
Okay.
Hopefully that'll work. Did you want me to go in and?
Yes, because I just heard once again that we have a mountain lion in town.
There was.
So would you like to tell us things? That's, I'm telling you what I heard, now you tell us what's going on.
Wednesday morning, I got a call from a resident to go look at their house. And they had a rabbit cage and all around the rabbit cage was just destroyed. They have blankets, you know, trying to keep it warm and dig marks all around it. And then after looking around, we found some bigger tracks and a lot of little tracks. So we called Game Fisher Parks, they showed up the next day. They confirmed that it was a mountain lion and I don't know how many cubs.
Well, I've heard two, so.
Okay.
They've not seen them, they're just telling me there's two.
Okay.
So.
But anyways, so I asked him, I said, is there a reason, any reason to be worried about it? He said, no, they normally don't stay in one spot too long. They just keep going in a circle. I think they have like a five-hundred mile radius that they roam, so.
Well, it was between mine and your house, Mary. I forgot to show you.
Just don't go out early in the morning.
Well, the dogs were going crazy in the backyard. The only smart one was the big one and he was quivering by the door. And, you know, I didn't know really what was going on. And then the next morning, I was walking out and I found a scat between the house. And that was pretty much just her. So and then tracks back there too. So I would imagine it was probably chicken.
You say found it, scat or cat?
Scat.
So and the game board did say if anybody sees it, you know, let me know or them know and give you permission to shoot it. We need to.
Where was it, where was it seen on, was it on the north side?
On Fourth Avenue.
Okay.
So.
So as council members, we all have the right to shoot it too if we find it in the backyard?
Well, you got to call me first.
You have to have a tag.
But, you know, and honestly, if you're, if you're not there nocturnal, they're always out at night, so. There's, he said, there's not much to worry about. And, you know, every time we heard about a mountain lion pass through town, we probably would never go outside because there's a lot of them around, so.
Okay. So the word is it's gone, except.
Maybe in your booth.
I set up a trap to try and catch it. I got a big trap and had all steak down, kind of house cat.
It's not in our neighborhood in here. Well, just so you know, house cats attract those things, so maybe just leave that in there.
Leave the cat in there, yeah. I was really hoping to see the great mountain lion, I tracked it next morning. I wonder what I would have done.
Was this about four or five days ago?
Wednesday. Wednesday about. This resident had a Ring camera, it went off a few times, but it didn't, it didn't catch, catch it on there. And it was about three, I think it's in three AM, three thirty.
All righty, okay, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, so I also attended that Coffee Connect that Rochelle hosted. And I would just like to mention that I think something that we could take advantage is that one free hour and have her review our employee manual. So would anyone have a problem with us using some free time to do something like that? Okay, and the other thing on my list is I just want to congratulate the boys' basketball team and I wish them the very best of luck in their adventure this week. And I'm sure they'll do well for us. Okay, with that, we're at item nineteen. Is there any other items for discussion? No action will be taken?
I was here last meeting, but it got brought up for food trucks. And they're not in the zoning ordinance and they'd have to go to planning commission. When is the next planning commission? And would we be willing to ask them to get something that looks good for the ordinance for food trucks?
So those that were in existence prior to us revising our zoning ordinance, our grandfather, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I'm just saying for, to allow that business to come to town because I don't think we should not allow a business to come in.
But in those zoning ordinances, it would give us an opportunity to specifically say where those food trucks could be at. And so that would be the thing about having it in it. So in answer to your planning zoning question, there will be a need in the near future for us to have a meeting. So what I think Zach is asking from you is, is that okay to ask them to address that? Because then there's going to have to be a writing phase and then advertising, there's a process that goes with that. But how does the council feel? In the future, would we allow in specified places, not Main Street, that we would allow a food truck?
Well, I think it needs to be looked into and I should think it should be regulated. That's something I think we need to address.
I know Custer has a big nine-page thing on food trucks.
Could we do it in five? There you go. Okay, so what I hear is consensus to address that. And we'll make sure that happens when that need for planning and zoning meeting comes out.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else then? Oh, yes. Okay, we want to remind everyone that Tuesday, that's tomorrow night, at seven o'clock is a annual ambulance meeting and it's here. And so that would be very good for us to attend that.
What time is that?
Seven o'clock, ambulance.
Zach, are you still on that board? Yep.
Fingers crossed I'll be here, it's not snowing apparently, but we do need.
Good job. Okay, is there anything else that needs to come? Oh, before number twenty, the next city council meeting is going to be Monday, April second at six-thirty. That is a Monday again, so that meets Carolyn's schedule. Anything else? Seeing none, we do have a need for executive session. So Rick.
I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to SD CL one dash twenty-five dash two parentheses.
One.
One-on-four.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you. We look forward to working with you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Garrett, we will need you in a bit, but Don's. Okay, I call us out of executive session. And that moves us to agenda twenty, item twenty-two, action to be taken.
I'll make a motion to approve a sixty-seven hour raise for Rochelle Perrell.
Okay, it's been moved by Zach, seconded by Dan to approve a sixty-seven raise for the Economic Development Director. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other further thing that's going to come before the council? Motion, meeting is adjourned.